Good evening and welcome to the April 18th, 2018 meeting of the Gaithersburg Clinic Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from March 28th, 2018. I think Matt, you were out on that one.
Yep.
So, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of March 28th, 2018 as read in the record.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? I abstain. So it's a 4-0-1. I will mention for the record that Phil is joining us on the dais, but I think since we have a full house, he'll be just involved in some of the discussion items at the end, alright?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thanks for being here anyway.
Sure thing.
Always a pleasure to have you. Next up is a consent agenda, and we have one item tonight for AFP-7849-2018 Brighton Village Pool. This is renovations to the existing pool area at 345 West Side Drive in the R20 medium-density residential zone. Anybody have any questions about the consent agenda?
No.
That's straightforward. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second?
Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? That passes unanimously. Next up is a resolution that follows up our discussion and vote on SP-7805-2017, 315 East Diamond Avenue, Resolution of Approval for Final Site Plan, SP-7805-2017, known as the Fishman Property for a 109-unit apartment building with 8,663 square feet of commercial space located within the CBD central business center zone. Jasmine, you setting up to answer questions on that? Are you getting ready for the next?
Yes, I'm just saying, staff had sent you an email of the draft resolution for the Fishman's final site plan. After the last planning commission meeting, staff thought it would be best to put together a resolution outlining the required findings for this application.
Excellent.
So, we have the resolution ready for you to sign today.
Any questions on the resolution?
No.
No, that's great.
Okay. Is there a motion please?
I make a motion for resolution of approval for final site plan, SP-7805-2017 as Fishman Property.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? That passes unanimously.
Hello, hello, hello.
We're not working on that.
Should I go low?
Although there are only three students, so I'll have to figure out how. I know which three I'd pick. Alright, so next up is our sign permit agenda, and one of those tonight for sign-16304-2018, Muddy Branch Square Dry Cleaners at 872 Muddy Branch Road. This is an icon sign approval in the C2 general commercial zone. Jasmine, this is yours also?
Yeah. Good evening. This application is for the Muddy Branch Square Dry Cleaner Building at 872 Muddy Branch Road. This application comes before the planning commission because the sign has the image of a dog, which is considered an icon. Icon signs require planning commission approval per section 24-212J of the city's sign ordinance. So the applicant's requesting to install a 34.7 square foot sign, and it's going to incorporate the name and the icon. So the sign's going to be located in the same area as the previous sign, which I think was the Radio Shack. And the property owner has reviewed and approved the signage that's being proposed. Any questions?
Just in case anybody happens to be looking, can you zoom in on the icon so it gets picked up for the record?
Sure. It's a dog, give it a thumbs up.
There you go.
It's like a happy little pup.
Very good. Alright, any questions about the proposal? Any concerns? Is anyone here to speak on this one? I don't think so. Okay. So there's no questions. The recommendation please.
So staff recommends approval of sign-16304-2018 based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report finding it in compliance with section 24-212 of the city's sign ordinance.
Any questions on the recommendation? Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report findings, the recommendation, I move that we grant sign-16304-2018, Muddy Branch Square Dry Cleaner signage, finding it in compliance with section 24-212 of the city code.
Second?
Moved in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? That passes unanimously. Alright, next up is a recommendation to Mayor and City Council on an update to our amendment to the master plan, 2018 master plan, for MP-1-17, the historic preservation element presented from staff is Chris Berger. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Commissioners. Staff is before you tonight seeking your approval of resolution PCR-1-18, which amends the historic preservation element of the master plan, and also your recommendation on approval of the element to the Mayor and City Council. The draft historic preservation element was made available to the public, state and federal agencies, regional organizations, and to the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission on December 1st of 2017. The Planning Commission and the Mayor and City Council held a joint public hearing on the preservation element on February 20th. The Planning Commission's record remained open until April 6th. That draft has been revised and posted to the city website in response to comments received from the public, state and federal agencies during the public comment period, and from the Planning Commission and Mayor and City Council at the joint public hearing. The HDC reviewed this updated draft of the element at its May, March 22nd meeting and was supportive. The Chair of the HDC has provided a memo in support of the document included in your packet as exhibit 34. Also included in the most, is the most recent draft of the element with a memo that describes what was changed from the joint public hearing draft. We anticipate the preservation element will go before the Mayor and City Council at its May 21st meeting. I'll now go through each of the changes made to the document. First, on this page, it was revised to reflect the HDC officer elections that were held in January. On this page, the contents, table of contents, the identification subhead was revised. It was changed to identification and designation throughout the document, and we'll get into that more later. Also on this page, Gaithersburg Development History, the subhead section were revised for consistency. Again, we'll address this later. On page two, the sentence at the end of the fourth paragraph down here was cut off by the text, so we continued that. Their wellness, their preventative wellness strategies was cut off, so we completed that sentence. Moving on to page four, a reference was added to objectives and action items at the beginning of the second paragraph, so this intro here was, is new. Page seven, the paragraph describing certified local governments at the top of the page was removed because it was redundant and was described earlier in the document. Moving on to the next page, two sentences were added under the survey section to explain the Maryland inventory of historic properties. That was at the request of the Maryland Historical Trust to add more information. Also on that page, a sentence was added at the end of the identification versus designation sidebar down here to explain that historic designation requires evaluation according to established criteria and a process for approval. Again, that was a request from Maryland Historical Trust. The title of this map was changed, again, Maryland Historical Trust request. Moving on to page 10, the entire designation process subsection was added here with two paragraphs that explained the, that these, keeps moving, three paragraphs that describe the process, and the sidebar text was changed here slightly. In the first sentence, we added the words can serve as a useful tool. Page 11, new survey techniques and review subheader was changed to new designation techniques to better reflect the section, the subject of this section. The word survey is also changed to designation system in the subsequent text. Moving on to page 14, the new sustainable communities tax credit subheader was changed to the Maryland Heritage Structure Rehab Tax Credit, and the associated text better clarifies who is eligible for that credit. Again, Maryland Historical Trust requested that correction. Page 15, the timeframe for the federal preservation tax credit was changed to reflect the changes in the new tax law. Page 17, Maryland Historical Trust was added to the list of preservation partners. Page 18, the headers on the graphic here were revised to make them more consistent. Some headers had the dates first, then the text. We made everything the same, and the headers were changed throughout the following chapter. Moving on to page 23, the status of NIS National Register eligibility was corrected to reflect their current status. They're not actually listed yet, but they are in the process. And moving quickly down to page 33, the Ascension Severance House was removed from this map because on page 40, it was newly designated since the last preservation element was adopted. So it was put on the most recently designated map of its own. Page 45, Observatory Heights and Realty Park were added to this map to better reflect the corresponding text which describes that map. And on page 60, the introduction paragraph was removed and replaced with two new paragraphs that better reflect how preservation objectives and action items are organized and will be utilized. So these two intro paragraphs are brand new. And finally, on page 62, under the management objective section, staff approvals already were codified, so there was no need to introduce text amendments. So we removed any mention of having text amendments on that. So are there any questions about the changes?
Any questions?
I think, just as a broad statement, I think this is, well, first of all, great job. I know you led the staff effort on this, and I know you've got a lot of input probably crossing in front of you that's in opposite directions, but nice job employing the soul to get this.
Thank you.
One thing I noticed is I think it really sets a good template for how to do master plans with these sort of layers of information. There's the technical stuff, and then there's the sidebars that just cut right to the chase for the users who want to know, you know, the fundamentals, right? That men don't need to work through all of the documents. I think tables set up the tax credits. I mean, it's a great way to just get that information out there without getting lost in a lot of narrative. And I, you know, we need more of that frankly for some of these sort of technical documents. I think it's really a well-done way to organize a hierarchy of information from the truly tacky, truly, you know, the nerdy stuff that I know staff loves to get into, to the stuff that we know we just want to get in front of the, in front of the property owners quickly and succinctly, and it's, I think, really nice job with that.
Thank you.
Quick question. I know obviously this is available to anybody, if anybody wants to go on the line to see it. Is this going to be published in any way, shape or form, other than on the web?
I think we would have it available to the public if they would like to stop in and see it, but mostly it'd be available on our website.
Okay. Because, I mean, it is a, it is a really nice piece, and it does give a lot of perspective on the city itself, the story of the city, and obviously what's new in the city as far as, is there a preservation? I just think it's a worthwhile document to publish out there perhaps, and distribute to the public on a, as needed, on a, as wanted basis.
The Maryland Historical Trust has expressed the desire to have this specific preservation element available to other communities to use as a guide, so.
Charge it. Charge it. It's in charge of it. John, go charge of it. I agree, I agree with Lloyd. It's almost a historical, well, it is a historical document. I think that the pictures are great, and they give context to a lot of great things that have gone on in our history here in Gaithersburg, and I'm going to share it with, with my colleagues on the, on the Maryland Planning Commission Association. I'm really, because they share things like that with us, and I'm going to share that. I'm going to tell the good news of Gaithersburg through this document.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I'm just agreeing with these guys, but to say that illustrative examples are not just for the pretty picture or to break the page. It makes a document more accessible and makes that document more important to more people. So, instead of just 20 of us might read it, you know, now we'll get to be 100 people just because you've included good illustrative examples. And then there's also the enforcement piece that the illustrative examples, examples help us.
We have a very good graphic designer on staff, Alyssa Roth, so all the praise should go to her.
Excellent. Great. There were, there's some action items in there, future actions like updating the design guidelines and some things like that. Is that active, or is that, will that come later in the discussion?
As soon as the Mayor and City Council hopefully adopts, then we would start implementing this. And some of them carry forward from the 2003 element, so some of them do carry forward. They're repetitive, but a lot of them are new, and hopefully we can start implementing those as soon as possible.
Excellent.
Is that the same for the, those properties that we're identifying in the report?
Correct, yeah.
Towards designation?
Correct, yeah.
Great.
Alright, any other comments? Our record's closed, right?
Yeah, it closed a couple weeks ago.
Alright. So, the recommendation is that we, why don't you go ahead and read it, Chris, please?
Staff recommends the commission approve resolution PCR-1-18, and recommend adoption of MP-1-17, an amendment to the City of Gaithersburg Master Plan, revising the historic preservation element to the Mayor and City Council.
Alright, very good. Is that one motion, just to approve the resolution on our part and then recommend adoption?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution PCR-1-18, and recommend adoption of MP-1-17, amendment to the City of Gaithersburg Master Plan, revising the historic preservation element to the Mayor and City Council.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Passes unanimously. Alright, nice work.
Excellent job.
Now, what's next? What's the next section? Alright, that takes us then to site plans tonight, and we have, I think, just one. Alright, yes. SP-7688-2017, Crown Phase 2 Neighborhood 3, development includes 201 townhomes, 44 single-family detached units, and 66 202 condos, south of Fields Road and east of DeCoburne Drive in the MXD Mixed Juice Development Zone. And presenting for staff is Jasmine Forbes again.
Well, we can work out today.
So staff's before you to present, uh, staff is before you to present final site plan application, SP-7688-2017. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section 24-168, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approvals. The applicant's requesting approval for the Crown Neighborhood 3 Phase 2 Development. This application's based upon schematic development plan SDP-7354-2016, which was approved on February 21st of 2017. So this application currently does not include final architecture elevations. Staff made it on the report that architectural elevations will be reviewed on just another, amended final site plan application future. So I have David Ramsey of Westbrook, who's going to do the presentation.
Thank you, Jasmine. Good evening, Commissioners. Good to see you all again. As Jasmine mentioned, I'm David Ramsey with the applicant here tonight to present our site plan.
Welcome back.
What's that?
Welcome back.
Thank you. So, this first slide here, you're all familiar with Crown, but this is an overview of the overall development. We've got San Mike Highway here to the west, Fields Road borders the property to the north, with Omega Drive to the east. The Coburne Drive comes up the middle of the property here. Neighborhood 1 Downtown Crown is located on the eastern portion of the property. Neighborhood 2 is in the central portion of the property, and then Neighborhood 3 to the east is shown here outlined in red. Neighborhood 3 is separated into two phases. Phase 1, located here directly adjacent to DeCoburne Drive, received final site plan approval in November of last year, and is currently under development. We expect vertical construction to start a little bit later in 2018. And Phase 2, located directly to the east of Phase 1, encompasses all of the remaining area within Neighborhood 3. Phase 2 includes a total of 311 homes comprised of townhouses, 2 over 2 condos, and single-family detached homes, all in accordance with our approved schematic development plan for Neighborhood 3. Consistent with the existing Crown development and serving as a continuation of Phase 1, the Phase 2 design is focused on creating a sustainable urban lifestyle by integrating a network of streets and sidewalks favorable to both pedestrians and automobiles while also providing an abundance of usable open space. The road types, dimensions, and overall site layout are consistent with our SDP, as the streets create a similar pattern of blocks with pedestrian-friendly intersections. The primary points of access into Phase 2 will be from Salinger Drive, which runs vertically between Phase 1 and 2, Rockwell Avenue running east to west, Crown Park Avenue running east to west, and Fields Road to the north. The extension of Salinger Drive to the north will provide one of two connections into Fields Road, and the construction of Morrison Drive to the east will provide the second. The extensions of both Crown Park Avenue and Rockwell Avenue will provide connectivity to Phase 1 as well as the rest of the existing Crown neighborhood. On and off-street parking has been located to maximize available guest and visitor parking within each block, and off-street parking has been provided through a combination of garage and driveway spaces. Neighborhood 3 Phase 2 includes a combination of 16-foot, 20-foot, and 24-foot townhomes, 2 over 2 condos, and single-family detached homes, as I mentioned. This layout, as well as the locations of each individual product type, match the schematic development plan, and as you can see, we've made an effort to integrate the various product types amongst each other throughout the site. As Jasmine mentioned, the builders for each product type have not yet been selected, so the architecture for each home will be brought back in individually under an amendment to the site plan. Phase 2 includes an abundance of green space, as you can see in the image to the left, and our site plan takes advantage of both usable open space and park design to create a strong sense of community in place. Consistent with the SDP, park spaces have been integrated within the design to enhance the character of the neighborhood. These areas will serve as community gathering spaces and provide passive and active recreation opportunities. Landscaping, play equipment, and other site furnishings are blended with formal hardscape and less formal green spaces to create a consistent theme within these spaces. Location of the parks and amenities are spread across Phase 2, providing convenient accessibility for all the residents. In addition to what's being provided in Phase 2, the retreat located here where that star is, is the fully constructed and fully operational clubhouse and pool facility, which serves as the, the primary amenity for both Neighborhoods 2 and 3 located directly to the south of Neighborhood 2. So in this image as well, up at the top, I'm going to highlight a couple amenity and park areas that I wanted to, to point out. This smaller circle closer to Fields Road is going to be a pocket park with added landscaping and some play equipment for children. The larger area down to the south around the pond is a larger green space which will have a trail connection to the existing trail currently terminating behind the retreat. So we'll extend that trail through this green space and loop it up through Phase 2 to provide connectivity and some additional pedestrian circulation. And I'd like to touch on these, these other areas in more detail on the following slides. So, we have a linear park, I'm sorry, there you go. We have a linear park that bisects Phase 2 running east to west across the site that will serve as a continuation of the smaller linear park in Neighborhood 3 Phase 1. This park creates a green access within the neighborhood encouraging pedestrian circulation while also strengthening community continuity and aesthetics. Included in the park will be a sidewalk system, benches, ample open space for passive recreation, and a variety of landscaping as well as low-impact ESD facilities, giving that linear park a very unique look and feel. We included two perspective renderings here for point of views, so Perspective A is obviously sitting to the west looking east, and Viewpoint B is sitting to the east looking west, looking down the linear park in both directions, so you get an idea of how that park will look sitting in between the townhomes. Crown Park, located here, will be an extension of the linear park and serve as a central park space within Neighborhood 3. We've designed this space with a variety of hardscape and landscape elements to accommodate a multitude of activities, from playing a game of frisbee in the enlarged open space, relaxing with friends or family for an afternoon picnic, spending some quality outdoor time with your kids, or simply enjoying a book or cup of coffee in one of the many built-in outdoor seating areas. We've also incorporated a structured pergola located to the south of the park located here, which will serve as a keystone feature to promote functionality, activity, and aesthetics. Again, we've provided two viewpoint perspectives for you. Viewpoint A is looking from the northwest out over the central park area, almost in an aerial fashion, so you can see how that central park will sit within the site. And then Viewpoint B is standing on or just over Crown Park Avenue here, looking back up at the park, and I think this gives a really neat viewpoint. Viking, their landscape architects, did a great job, I think, and put a lot of thought into this. We really like how you've got the knee wall, the retaining wall, that gives it an elevated presence. The pergola sits right down there on the end. There's a, you know, kind of a grand stairway up in there, and it's really going to create a neat streetscape, I think, and kind of a neat look and feel as you're driving or walking past on Crown Park Avenue. Rockwell Park is a pocket park located just north of Rockwell Avenue and creates a more intimate setting due to its size and location. Including in this park will be a pedestrian sidewalk system, open space consisting of playmounds and climbing structures for kids, as well as unique landscape and hardscape elements to promote character. Provided another viewpoint here, as you can see, looking up over Rockwell Avenue into that park, you can see how we framed off that park with sidewalk lighting and street trees around the perimeter. Playmounds here, sidewalk runs through the park. We incorporated a, it's like an archway trellis, wrought iron type structure that's going to be landscaped and almost create a tunnel that you can walk through on the sidewalk. So again, just a unique type structure to, to give it a little more intimacy and make it stand out. Last slide, just key lots. We wanted to point out, this is consistent with Neighborhood 2 as well. This plan was taken from our schematic development plan, and there, the key lots within Phase 2 are identified in three ways, alley entrance lots, in-unit lots, and open space lots. So on these, on these homes that have the bolted lines around them, those will be the facades that get treated as key lots, and they'll be required to include a consistent pallet of materials to promote and protect the sensitive U-sheds, either coming into or out of an alley, coming down some of these main thoroughfares, or the side, the side of these in-units as well. In addition to the key lot treatments, appropriate alley screening has been provided in the form of walls and landscaping to allow for privacy as well as to support the integrity of the various U-sheds. And that concludes our presentation.
As far as the key lots, when you talk about that, does that necessarily mean that those particular houses were like the three-sided brick, or, or that's really kind of not determined yet?
So, what it, so that, I think I understand your question. So the, the, the facades that are folded will have to have a consistent pallet of materials as the front of the home?
Okay.
So, just about every house out there has either brick or stone on the front?
Right.
So, you know, this lot, for example, here, right? This is the front of the home, so the side and the rear would have to have brick and stone if the front had to have stone.
I think, to piggyback a little bit, I think what we want to know is on the parks that essentially would be the back of a house in a conventional situation, are you also turning not only the materials, but really the, the design of the facades, the architectural elements, whether it's gables or window spacing or stacking, is that, that you have an eye on that to be more of a, of a front elevation?
We do.
When they confront the parks?
So, we tried.
And I'm actually an architect, so it's a little bit more theoretical, but just to be clear, I think the key lots, I don't know if you've said it in the actual documentation, but there's key lots, and then there's key lots that confront a space where it's with their rear, you know, the floor plank suggests it's the rear of the house, but they, for all intents and purposes, create the front of the streetscape.
Sure. So, a couple examples to point out there. The Crown Park here, right, which is the, the main central park, these are the fronts of the homes that are facing these. We designed and kind of laid that out strategically, so we, we wouldn't have, or I guess we would, you know, as many of the fronts of these homes would face these parks as possible. Obviously, the, the sides and any of these other units that are adjacent to them are also treated because of that. To your point specifically, Rockwell Park here, these are three single-family homes that front Morrison, and we've treated the back of these as key lots. But if you recall, we also discussed this in detail at SDP about these lots specifically, and we went even further to say that the rears of those homes should be treated as the fronts, as more, more or less, right? So, it's going to look like the front of those houses.
But is that documented in the site plan package specifically? I mean, we're, we're going to end up seeing it, so I'm not, not really.
So it's documented in SDP, and then I think the approach would be when we, when the architecture comes back in as an amendment to the site plan, that's where that requirement would kick in.
I would also add, it's also documented on the key lot plan, which will be included with the final site plan. So it does outline it there, and it's also, I believe, outlined in the design guidelines, I think, as well, or at least it starts laying out what the requirements are for the design of the architecture and the design guidelines.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
But you are correct, ultimately, they would have to come back to you for your review.
And the other thing too, that I'll just point out, since we're on that, going back to Rockwell Park, if you recall, you know, we spent a lot of time and discussed this park and how it would look, right, specifically with these homes, applying to it. And so if you recall, all these street trees that are going around this park are going to be enlarged, they're going to be bigger than some of the other trees that are within the area, right, to give it a immediate impact and look. We put streetlights and sidewalk down this alley to frame it off, to help that look like an actual street, not the, not an alley with the rears of those homes. So we did put a lot of thought and effort in that based on what we talked about in SDP.
Can I ask a very esoteric question? When you select the trees, do you look at longevity? I'm finding, I'm in my neighborhood for 24 years, and I'm finding a lot of trees falling over now, you know, because they're old, or they, I guess they've lived past their useful life, but this is a park.
And for ad repairs?
Yeah, oh my goodness, I'm going, I'm saving up to get rid of the four in front of my house. But, but are you looking at, you know, the elements, the trees that you're picking, and what their longevity is, and that kind of thing? I know that's a very esoteric question, but...
No, we do. I'm not an arborist, so I'm not going to sit here and pretend like I'm one, but the, you know, there's a lot, they're native species type trees that do better in certain areas, the others, we pay a lot of attention to, you know, deciduous for severgreen.
Right.
We rely a lot on our landscape architects to pick a lot of that forest, but there is a lot of thought, it's not like...
Okay, and could you convey some that we really, you know, it would be nice to put some real thought into that, because down the road, you know...
Yeah. No, it can be a problem, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Can you tell what the percentage of the green, public green, green space is for this particular phase? Do you have any idea what the percentage is?
The percentage of the public green space? I do not have that number handed.
Hold on, people, I'm going to pack this up. You see all the heads go down, right?
I can get it for you, I mean, that's part of the reason we tried to put this image in here, right, was just to show, you know, that we did try to maximize the amount of green space, and obviously took advantage of as much of it as we could by incorporating the parks and amenities. But in terms of a percentage, I don't, I don't have that for you. Maybe Jay, maybe Mike does.
Get out of seat.
Good evening. Mike Goodman, VICA. So I do have the numbers in front of us. For phase two, the green space that is being provided is actually 51%.
51%.
Yeah. Forty percent is required in residential areas, and so obviously we exceeded, we have a large green space in the environmental area, obviously that helps, but all the green space that we were able to accomplish makes it...
And has that phase compared to previous phases that were approved that are comparable in terms of acreage or housing? Is it comparable?
That, that I don't know. I know that we've always been in Crown, we've always been ahead of the curve because of the large environmental areas, it's made it easy, as well as the generous open spaces that we've provided for the, for the residents.
And the other thing is art in public spaces. Any, any idea of using any of the art, or putting art in some of these public spaces as well? I know the city's been encouraging that over the years, and thought, you know, these are nice, some of these are really, really nice parks.
Yeah.
And besides just play equipment, maybe there's, you know, some interesting stuff in there.
So we're actually really close to finalizing a piece of artwork. We actually just got the site plan amendment approved here in the past two months. Stephen Weitzman's the artist, and we've been working with Shelley at Arts and Public Places. There's a park, if you think about it, neighborhood one, if I go back up to this, there's that park between those pulty townhomes and paladar, right here, that was originally just going to be kind of an open space park, but we're going to be incorporating public art into that as well. That construction should probably start within the next sixty years.
Any kind, any idea for kind of for phase, this phase two now, as far as public art goes in any of these parks? Or consideration at least?
Consideration for sure. You know, I think this, again, I mean, we had a site plan finalized in neighborhood one, and now we're putting public art in there. So yeah, if the opportunity arises, we'll certainly consider it. Stephen's been great to work with, and what he's shown us is, I think, is going to be a great asset.
We'll forward to it. Great, thank you.
Ben, I just had a couple, couple areas I want to sort of talk about the details of, but just great job. You know, love the alley buffering, I think the plan is great, I think you massaged the few little concerns we have, it's just, it's great, it's a great neighborhood, it's great design. I love the playfulness in Rockwell Park and Crown Park, I think there's some, you know, just quirky little elements of topo with some other things, just, they look great. I think they'll be a great little environment, especially if you're a little kid, or an old man with a book like me. So, but I think the two, the two little areas I'm sort of not quite certain about are, I'll start with the linear park, you know, so there's, you know, I don't see a great deal of FFNE in there, there's no benches, trashcan kind of programming through there.
So I am fairly certain we put benches in that plan. This was, this was a similar comment, I think, that came up in the linear park in, in phase one, and we addressed it at staff level as part of the approval, so I, I thought we'd incorporate that, continued over the phase two.
I was so sure they were there that I just kept looking, but I just, I can't find them, so they're not in the landscape plan, but...
Well, put it this way, if they're not on the plans, that wasn't the intent, we will incorporate them, because that was the same comment that came up in...
I can imagine it would have been, yeah, you're going to want your...
In phase one, yeah.
Your residents to sit, to have someplace to put their trash, too, so...
That's part of the, that's part of the functionality of that space.
I mean, in the, in the main park, the Crown Park, I mean, there are benches in that central location.
Right. And the, and the other park as well, there's some great, great benches along the curve.
Right. Just not in those two wings, I don't see any of it.
Right. So I would ask staff to just keep an eye on that, let's get something in there where folks can stop and sit and enjoy, enjoy what is, I think, going to be really interesting along linear park.
Agreed, yeah.
Lighting in those linear parks, I know they're close, but I don't see any light fixtures or small area lights or anything like that.
We looked at that and discussed it internally, similar to what we did up here, and ultimately, you know, what you just said, the proximity of these homes, the light fixtures that are going to be on there, we felt like provided enough adequate light, or will provide it, to the walkways through there. Now that being said, if that turns out not to be the case, you know, it's always an opportunity, we just, you know, I've made the mistake before to overlight it, and then you get complaints from people because you're so close, right? I mean, you'd have, you'd have lights running down here, it's coming into their bedrooms, and, you know, it turns into a problem, but it needs to be lit, I agree, so our...
Agreed, I think when you, when you take it out of the hands of the landscape architect and give it to the architect, it becomes a projection sconce of some kind, you know, from the front of the house.
Right.
We just have to make sure that that conversation translates to whoever this builder is, who is bringing in stuff, that, we don't want, you know, wall packs, we want something elegant, but just a little bit of that light needs to come down onto the sidewalk.
You know, we have neighborhoods already in the city that have this sort of relationship where the houses are fronting onto parkland and not a street, and the lighting is either, the lighting on the houses is just porch lights and things that happen to spill onto the green, or deliberate spots where at least a little bit of lighting, kind of community lighting is placed. And it might be worth it, because I don't know that we have a design guideline that would necessarily dictate how to do it, but there's probably some good examples to model this on, to take a look at and decide that the existing condition is either too dark, so add a little bit, or it's, here's a good, good example of how to balance that. Because I think you're right, most of the fixtures we're seeing in the neighborhoods right now aren't cut-off fixtures, they have a little bit of halo to them, so, you know, as hard as you try, somebody's window will probably get that light, and that'll, that'll, that'll cause an issue, so it may have to be a lower-scale type of...
Yeah, but if it was bollard light where, you know, like in your linear park where you're east-west, sidewalks suddenly turn north-south, and they join, they join together, that's a great spot for a bollard light, or a stone light, or even a, even a, you know, six-foot pole or something that just gives a little bit of area light. I think you're right, we don't want to get anywhere close to overdoing it, we want to slightly underdo it, but, but a little bit of variation to the light, you know, will, I think, make a very romantic setting, and I think will sell your houses, so...
It might even be, I mean frankly, it could even be landscape lighting, as opposed to street lighting or sidewalk lighting.
Yeah, applied to tree, and, yeah.
That would be enough to spill over and do something for the walkways and give a little sense of security.
I think that's the right answer, actually, yeah.
I like that, actually, yeah.
Yeah. Especially, you know, some of these, you're putting in some great, you know, elms and oaks, and some of these are going to be just beautiful trees.
Do we have elms back now? We've got a good elm that's working, that's good news, good news.
And...
Chase the dacha.
And then, so, so if you just look at lighting for me, look at your furniture package, and then my second set of things I'd like to talk about are just the two little bio-retention pieces along Salinger Road. I think those also, I think they're, they're well done, they're cute, I love their function, truly love protecting my crab.
Here and here, those two?
Yeah, so the two, they're right along Salinger, towards the north. They, I think that's also an opportunity for a bench or something, it's a little stopping spot, and it's the, as you leave this neighborhood and you're entering into the other one, you know, it's, it's kind of a neat spot where you have a built-in bio-retention, you know, piece, and they're both, I think, you know, cutesy, well-designed, especially the circle one, and just sticking a bench in there might be a really nice way to...
Agreed.
Let somebody stop and rest and check out, watch people, and...
Yeah.
You have the amenity, if you can let people stop and enjoy it, that's, that's a great thing. So those are my only thoughts.
Yeah, good points, great. Does anybody else have questions, concerns? I actually need to turn this over and see if anybody in the public is here to comment on this application. Is there, or we just have, just have an audience slide? Okay, very good. Any other questions on that? So Jasmine, formally then, what is the recommendation, please?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings of recommendation grant SP-7688-2017, fighting compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city code, what, so we, it's going to be three conditions. Staff noticed that they, applicant had satisfied condition number three, so instead of four conditions, it's going to be three.
Okay. Why isn't there a condition for the elevations, or for the architecture? I mean, I get it, we're approving, you know, they'll come back, but usually at final site plan, we have architecture and we don't, so shouldn't that be a condition?
We can add a condition.
Yeah. And, but they can start infrastructure or any of the other stuff.
Right, they can, they can do the roads, but...
Okay. So do you want to add, and make that the fourth condition then?
Oh, just a question, I don't, maybe there's a practice I missed that...
It does seem odd, yeah.
We don't, okay.
Yeah, we can add this condition, I think that's probably a good way to do it.
I think it's better to just be clear right up front, for the reasons you're saying, yes.
And, and the other one I wondered is, do we want to do a condition that essentially captures your commentary about the lighting and some of the furnishings, site furnishings and do staff work with applicant, or applicant work with staff to resolve seating in the park and accent lighting in the public space?
Wouldn't it come up during the next steps, next phase, when we get the actual plans for the actual buildings, as well as the landscape plan?
Probably not.
Well, we have it now.
This has the landscape...
This is the approval of the, of the site work, so if we want something more on the site work, I think it could happen.
Would that include trees?
Uh, how so?
Just the, what, what they're going to...
Well, it's all in there. And, and just to help, I, I looked through it and was very impressed with the tree list, so some really neat stuff, there's some, frankly, they're putting a little bit of money into their tree selections.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'm letting VICA in. But it's a good, I think it's a good tree list, and I think it's a long-lived tree list.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no Brad prepared, we don't like to talk about...
So make this condition, what's that?
What you were just saying about the benches and the light.
I, I think, sort of a question for the commissioner, for staff, should we do that?
Staff to work with applicant on refining the FFNE or site furniture, or site furnishings and lighting.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So that would be four, five, I think.
Five.
Okay. Any, any other concerns?
Um, I just want to add that I, um, you know, I, I see that they have put a lot of thought into it, I still think that it's unfortunate that you have two streets terminating into, becoming alleys in the south of the, of the plan, and I think that, that could be easily resolved by moving those alleys, exit and entry, one off or two off of that intersection, I think...
We're going to call the plan out, maybe, Jasmine, if you would, please?
The southern portion, I think it's...
You can probably see it, right?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's the southern portion of the, of the plan, those homes, the two access to the alley are terminations of streets that are going to become, so all of a sudden transition into a service alley. I think if you were to remove it one off or one or two, you would create, or basically terminate the vistas with a home, which is a more desirable termination, and also avoid that conflict of street versus service. And so that's, that's my first comment, and then my second comment, and I think that this is something that I personally blame myself for, for missing at the previous portion, is that we have this grand, wonderful space, just the, the main square, the main green, and we have sides of homes, basically, or the homes prioritize the linear park rather than the greater space. And I think that creates sort of like an uncomfortable dynamic with the public space, and I would prefer if the, the homes would be facing the mains, the main green rather than facing, the prioritizing the linear park. So those are...
So those units on the key lots plan, I think, are identified, and, and kind of similar to the discussion about the park up on the upper-right northeast quadrant, the architect could turn the corner, frankly, you know, at that point, right? Because you've already identified it as key lots, I believe.
Yeah, and I, and I noted that, I, I still believe that in spite of that, there's the gap of the service alley, creating a visual corridor in both directions that could be avoided if you turned the homes to face the main space, and that corridor wouldn't be as offensive to the linear park, because it's just a, a pedestrian break in the continuity of the homes.
Oh, I see.
Turn the alley interior into the...
Right, right.
Into the linear park, and then have it, as the alley come out the linear park, so your townhouses turn into an L instead of bird, a C instead of a Y.
Yeah, I'm afraid that one's probably, that was pretty well diagrammed, I think, for the SDP review.
Yeah, I don't think you change that.
But, I mean, I, I believe that it's still something that we could address in the final site plan.
Zoom in on one example, that, this should be very clear about where you're talking about, if you can, Jasmine, although, I think it's where the, the linear park turns into the...
Into the square.
Big square, and then what happens to the units that are south of that?
So what are we... Everything at...
No, the main, the main green.
The big park, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking about lots 21, 14, 11...
So to turn the homes to face the large green rather than the linear park, and create an alley that creates the access point south.
But then we create a really short block, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, I'm sorry, but we did look at that during the SDP with staff, and one of the concerns that we started to encounter was that, that alley was then on, directly on that linear park, whereas, you know, I understand that, that alley ends up kind of terminating at the, the large park, but the, the idea was that having the road between that alley terminus in the park was a better situation than having the alley terminate directly on the park.
But actually, the way that you handle that, you extend the last, the one that fronts the green horizontally, you extend it to have maybe a carriage house or a garage, and you mask the alley, so rather than dumping the alley into the green, you cap it with the last block that it's immediately adjacent. Yes. And, and the depths of your block, it would be more than, you know, 20 feet that you extend that way, and you would have the access to the alley in the, to the next...
Yeah, but I'd rather have a dead-end alley than what I thought you were saying, which is what, I think, was a C shape, you know, with the alley coming back up through the linear park, but, 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 you know, I'm not sure. I, I have the same sort of heartache about corners and townhomes, we never seem to be able to solve the, the townhomes and corners thing very well, without a great deal of architecture, you know, a good turret with a turret porch or something, you know, and, you know, living room that stretches across the corner, but we don't, we don't seem to be able to beat that into townhouse, townhome builders, so...
And, and yet you have that condition here, in a, like, magnified way with the corridor that expands in both directions. I think, you know, you have a wonderful space, truly, you have, I can, the amount of detail that you have devoted to designing these public spaces, it's wonderful, and I, in, in the previous rendition that we discussed in, in November, I was really impressed with the level of thought that you have put into this, and I just think that if you were to do this... And I just think that if you were to do this, if you were to face the houses into this green, it would give it the ground, the ground and the positioning and the plan. Because right now you have this gap, this huge gap of a service breaking it in both directions. And I think it takes away from the importance of the space.
I see your point, I, I don't think I agree with the compromises, but I definitely see your point. And I'd like, you know, we're always gonna be struggling with corner conditions.
Yeah, I mean, part of, part of what we've done there, and Rosali, I see what you're saying, I mean, we've treated these as key lots, there will be the, the alley screens, right? Running into those alleys that are, that are covered with landscaping, so it's not gonna be as, as wide as it looks here. I mean, it'll, it'll narrow that gap, there'll be a hardscape wall coming off the end of those units that are already treated as key lots, we'll have landscaping in front of them. And if you go back to the way we've designed this park too, if I can zoom out, um, you know, we've, we've tried to address that in a sense in the way that we've landscaped that park, right? Where you've got landscaping coming along the sides of here, so it's not, you know, you, you wouldn't stand over here and see a straight shot all the way down that alley. I mean, something's gonna catch your eye and break that line of sight before you get there. So, so we did put a lot of thought in that and, um, again, we looked at it pretty hard, like Mike said, during the SDP and this is ultimately what we landed on. But we, you know, I, I think with those being treated as key lots, with the alley screening, with the landscaping and everything we're incorporating here, it's not gonna be as open and gaping as, as you might imagine.
You know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's still like the building wall that homes facing that, that space, it's will never be replaced by the screening and by the last landscape, it will still be a gap. And I think that's what I'm struggling with. I think that, you know, you're, you're relying a lot on like ornamentation, for lack of a better word, to address these issues that may or may not be always there. And I think that, you know, being intentional about a, a space as important as this, to me warrants providing a, a built facade.
So if that were the case, so would you mind zooming into that same zone again?
The same, the key lot plan or this one?
Well, it was whatever plan we were using up close, I think it was the key lot plan. Just to look at right, right at the park and the surrounding buildings. Without redesigning on the fly, I just wanna get a sense of what, what this would really mean. So I think what we hear in the discussion is you wouldn't, wouldn't advocate turning the alley back out to the street, it would be a dead end alley. That would back into sort of a hammerhead, oh, she's, two or three driveways of the units facing the park. Which is not a terrible idea, cause actually that would shorten the alley to, you know, two thirds of what it is now, effectively. No, there'd be a little bit of a T, but.
And, and you do have a little bit of a wiggle room in that, um, the Y block, because you have that extension of, of that home. So you could create a little bit more of a gap in between twenty one and twenty, uh, and twenty and allow for a bigger turnaround.
I mean, I feel, I feel like we looked at all this.
The lotting plan was approved at the SDP, revising the lots, basically what the code says, if you materially change the orientation of, of siding of buildings, does require them to amend the SDP.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, we can't do anything.
Is that something that we can grant in the process, um, or would they have some resumé?
Council does the SDP.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or they could allow, they have to hear it and then they could like to toss it back to us, but it would be, it'd start with them.
That's correct.
I, I hear what you're saying, but to me, like, that space, it's like important enough for, in my case, to make it right.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be worried too, I don't know, the, the problem right now is we're looking at final site plan and we'd be asking essentially for revisions to SDP. Not from the procedural perspective, but even from a, like, we don't know how it lays out, right? We don't know if that would.
But I don't know if it's even gonna work.
Yeah, exactly, we don't even know if that's a workable solution, given the street grid that exists right now.
I mean, what I, what I can, what I can offer is, you know, based on what we're proposing here with, with the key lot treatments, the alley screen wall. And we can look if there's a way to, you know, enhance those, those alley screens, maybe put, you know, more than what we're showing already, you know, to, to break that up, Rosali, just, just to help with that. You know, that's something we can certainly do. You know, going, going back to try to revise the SDP now would be a, quite a feat.
No, and I, and I, and I hear you, I actually, I personally missed that last meeting when the SDP was approved for personal reasons and I wish I would have been here too.
Well, I think regardless, I'm not gonna vote to, um, to continue back to SDP for my vote. But I also, but I do wanna make the point that you have quite a bit of architecture there. And while I know, um, both of us probably have a hard time understanding or, you know, with what will potentially be a bad side, even though it'll be the same materials, it'll still be treated like the side of a townhouse.
Sure.
And not.
It doesn't have to be.
But it doesn't have to be, right, so there's a great deal of pressure on those two facades, really four facades, two on each side. To be, you know, to be architectural, to be interesting, to be engaging and to be architectural.
Well, here's, here's an idea, you know, you could turn the fronts of those homes to front the green. And there's great precedent for that, I think that, you know, thinking as an architect, that actually frees the circulation of the home for the circulation to go towards the, the attached wall. And it provides, um, um, the interior spaces to flow actually in a better way. So I, I would encourage you, if this is where we are and this is what our decisions have, have led us to. And I would encourage you to turn the fronts of those, um, units, those four units.
I almost take that for granted, that, that the end elevations here are not a side elevation that happen to be better materials, they are in fact a front elevation. However, that has to play out when you back into the plan of the house. You know, whether it's two fronts, it's a front and a side or whatever it is.
The, the existing homes in neighborhood two, if you go out of Crown, I'm sure you've been out there and seen them, I mean, those, those key lots really do look nice. So you look at those, the only thing that's missing is the door.
I'm talking about front door, front porch, uh, like, let's make this the face of the, of the space.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I think, you know, less the, less the porch and the door, I think you've got that with, with, with the treatments here. And, and, you know, if you, if you go out and look at neighborhood two and how those key lots look, you know, it's, it's different than the, the end unit of any other townhouse in my mind. I'm not saying that because I'm biased to Crown, it really is, I mean, they, they do a really good job on those key lots. So, you know, if you're, if you're thinking yourself a vinyl side of a townhouse sticking against a really nice, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna look like that.
What we're worried about is you'll put a really nice material on that face, but the windows will all be that, that odd sort of scattering of things that happen to line up with the kitchen sink, line up with the second story bathroom.
Sure.
Line up with, you know, the, the big window next to the TV in the, in the living room. But nothing that's really composed like a front elevation would for, for a main entrance.
So the, the next thought that comes in my mind, and this is a similar conversation to what we had up here, right? With, with these units facing this park and I'd have to go back, Greg, and look at the, um, the way we conditioned that. Or maybe it was Rob on the, on the SDP, but I, I think there were some, not only key lots, we went above and beyond key lots. I think there was something about, you know, if, if we could fit a rear entry door, put one there, I think there was something about windows, adding additional windows there.
And that was, that's actually where, where we headed earlier in the discussion with the key lots that face, you turn the corner and face something other than just a road.
Yep.
There, there, there's key lot and there's kiki lot, right? There's, there's sort of double A key lot type of treatment. So I think without architecture in front of us, we can't critique, say how it works or not.
Yep.
But I think what you're hearing is that those corners becomes something even a little bit more, more challenging than just turning the corner on a conventional, um, stick of townhouses. Because the park is there and they confront the park.
Yep.
I know you've got some techniques in play from the design guidelines to choke down the, um, alleys so that they, they appear less gaping or they appear a little bit more secluded from the rest of the, um, the, the space. And that, that's probably part of this, probably part of this as well, in a way that may not yet be designed. I mean, it may be something you have to take back to the, to the design team.
No, I agree, and, and I wish I had the language in front of me to see how we condition, specifically condition these lots, cause you're right, it was beyond just additional key lots. So, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to treat, you know, and again, without architecture, it's tough, but, you know, treat these four lots here similar and condition them the same way we conditioned these to make that work.
About it, but that might mean that those, those units are not catalog production units, right? I mean, whoever you get as the builder may have to do something a little outside their, their standard catalog to make this work.
And that's, and that's what would happen.
And we know that conflict, you know, in, in doing these in other places.
So I just got a text from Trudy Schwartz, who would be here, but she wasn't feeling well today. And obviously she's watching from home, so I feel compelled to report her text, which is wraparound porch on lots.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That may be, that may be the perfect.
Good, thanks Trudy.
So, um, do we, are we running into the same issue with the SDP in terms of the termination of the alley?
Yes. You, you wanna move the street, I don't.
Yeah, so the code says if, once you start materially changing the orientation or siding of buildings, it requires SDP to be amended.
Well, the problem is I don't know that we can move it, I mean, we don't, we don't have any feasibility studies as far as to show how this would work if, without redoing the whole street.
To me, it's not, it's not a feasibility study, it's about changing the character of, of a street to a, to a service alley. And I think that there has to be, and if, you know, this is what we're dealt with or this is where we are, I think then.
Reason to approve it, I think if we, if there was a real fatal flaw in the plan, we wouldn't approve the final site plan.
And I, but what I'm saying is where we are, I think then there has to be some treatment that narrows the ability to enter and then changes the character of this space. So it does not read as a continuation of the street.
So that's exactly what we did, um, in neighborhood.
Oh, now you're talking about the, the southern, the southern edge then.
She's talking.
Correct, I'm talking about the.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Rosali, but you're, you're talking, you're talking about this area and this area.
Yeah.
So this area was treated, um, as, that, that's part of neighborhood three phase one, which is already approved and we did treat that. We, we brought in landscaping, their, their alley walls on either side to narrow that specifically so where if you're driving south on Salinger, it's noticeably different and it's to mark that transition from a public street to a private alley. And we can certainly do that here.
Precisely, I, I do remember very clearly that conversation about that termination, I think at that point, we determined that that would not be there. Again, I, I missed the wrap up of this, I think I was actually traveling. And I didn't catch the fact that this other street was also terminating there. So I believe that we have to create some sort of separate.
We can treat, we can treat this the exact same way we treated this.
You're gonna get people driving on the back of your alley, of the alleys, trying to figure out where they are.
Yep.
So you don't think the design that's in here is sufficient?
Um, no.
So the, the way that they've ended the alleys here with.
I would offset it.
Board and brick, fencing is not sufficient?
I would totally like skew it and make it not terminate, I would terminate it on a building which is.
You would change the roads, right?
No, I wouldn't change the road, I would, I would put a house at the termination of that, of that street as a, based a termination and have the alley one off the building.
Right, I got you, right.
So it's the same condition that was down here, right? And we talked about this at the neighborhood three phase one site plan and we, we did address that adequately for that transition and that, that termination and, and we can do the same thing.
Right, but she's saying, she's saying there's no, there's no way to adequately fix that.
Just like they did in that, in that case in this particular scenario, because we're, um, this is approved by the SDP. I'm asking, like, if possible, to address it in the same manner that they did the other intersection.
And I'm saying we'll do that.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying this is sufficiently the same.
At this point, yes. Given the circumstances.
All right. What else, anything else?
I just wanna say, you know, you're taking this thing that looks like loads of bread, you're gonna make it into magic and I, I like what you're doing here, so.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
So I guess it raises the question, when we get into this condition about the architecture coming back, if we need to put a bit of a spotlight on these elevated key lots, these ones that are confronting the park, you know, maybe Jasmine or Greg, somebody jump in.
That's kind of what I was getting at, I wasn't going as deep as my good friend.
So we just identify those six, seven?
We can do the condition that the, that the commission wishes, um, I think also the record does adequately address that, that needs to be obviously looked at more in depth.
More depth by cameras, is what you're saying?
But we can do it as, we can do it as a secondary, basically, I think a sixth condition or we can roll into the architecture.
If you and the applicant feel like the condition about bringing back their condition and what's in the record tonight about where we think there's an elevated concern about how that's resolved, if you think that's enough to come back with an appropriate solution, that's fine. That's all, that's all I'm asking.
And, and look, I mean, we'll be, we'll be working hand in hand with the individual builders through this. So, you know, it's gonna get communicated directly from me and the rest of the folks at the, of the applicant, to these builders. So the message will be relayed, um, there's no, there's, you don't need to be concerned about that, um, if that's something we do condition here.
Okay. All right. So where does that leave us, four, five conditions? Do you feel like we need to amend any of those conditions or add any language? Okay. So. Where does that leave us, are you ready for motion then?
Do we have, it was already.
Or you, I guess you need to do the recommendation for the record, right?
I'm sorry, again?
Do you need to do the recommended motion with the, just for the record then?
So to read the recommendation again with the.
Did you already do it?
She did do it, yeah.
I've drifted off, I'm sorry. So we are ready for a motion then, please.
And, um, real quick, the final architecture condition, um, I don't think we read that into the record, um, but I think we would do final architecture review and approve by planning commission prior to issuance of any building permits.
Okay.
That's typical, that's what I always say.
Yeah, we didn't read into the record, so I just wanted to make sure the record.
Okay. So that's number four now, and then number five is the, um, staff to work with applicant or applicant or staff on the site furnishings and lighting.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff reports finding and our generous conversations here and recommendations, grant SP dash seven six eight eight dash two zero one seven. Final site plan finding it in conformance with sections twenty four dash one seventy and twenty four dash one seventy one of the city code with the five conditions.
Second. Moving second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes, yeah, so thanks very much.
Good job.
Good work. Come back soon. No, I can take your time, do it well. All right, um, that takes us to from the commission, Phil, may I start with you, please?
Yeah, sure, the only thing I have tonight is in the spirit of the upcoming book festival, which is rapidly approaching. I encourage everybody to pick up a copy of this, this latest issue of Engage, who's Burt Magazine, it has a great article on literacy in the city. And the, the two girls on the cover are, are some of my favorites, so.
Okay, we gotta go get that.
Dan?
Um, yes, I did attend the listening session that the Maryland Department of Planning held and Trudy Schwartz was there. And, um, and also council person sales was there. Um, so it was, it was good, unfortunately it wasn't as attended as, well attended as they would have liked it to be. But anything that comes out of that, I will certainly share with, with my colleagues here on the planning commission. And I did wanna point out that, that I think you used the word playful and quirky in a sentence and I was very impressed.
I've got, you know, three thousand words, I'm slowly gonna slip in all of them before, before I'm done with this question. That's like the most Japanese I've ever said. There's nothing for me.
Um, I just wanna say that, um, you know, through the Kentland Scenery Foundation, we've been on, undergoing a process of strategic visioning for the main street in, in Kentlands. And so we are wrapping, we're, at the time of wrapping all that process up, we've, um, had, worked with a consultant, um, and two consultants. And we are getting ready and gearing up to present the findings to the community in, um, May thirtieth at the Kentlands mansion. So it's an open town hall, we invite everyone to be there, it's an exciting process and if you don't. it's an exciting process. And if you don't get to catch it, I believe it's in June fourth, we're going to be before mayor and city council, so.
Excellent. All right. Um, staff, anything you want to jump in? John?
Sure. Um, Greg, you were probably going to handle this, but, um, I did want to report that at the mayor and council meeting on Monday night, um, the Kettlins, the, uh, Saul Center's proposal for the Kettlin Square infill sites, um, did not pass an approval resolution. It was two, three vote.
Right.
So we are, well, um, the applicant did request the mayor and council to reopen the record on that issue because they do want to, um, make another attempt to, um, to provide a solution that the mayor and council would approve. And, uh, so they did open their record on Monday night. And so tonight, uh, we're asking you all to reopen your record as well.
So just for the record, the name, the number of the app or the...
It's, it's on your agenda. It's SDP seven seven one two twenty seventeen.
Okay. So your motion, please. Uh, I move that we reopen, um, I'm sorry, yes. Which one is it? I don't see it on...
SDP seven seven. It's from staff. It's down at the bottom.
I don't have it.
No, it's not, yeah, it's not there.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we reopen SDP seven seven one two dash two thousand seventeen, uh, for how much, how, what's the time?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Ooh, okay.
Okay.
Second.
It's moving second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's passes.
And Saul has not agreed to this, or they haven't, um, committed to this yet, but, um, uh, the May fourteenth work session, um, is intended to be, well, it's tentative right now, um, to be a joint work session of the mayor and council and planning commission to discuss this proposal.
Does that mean that it has to come back to us then?
Then it will have to come back to you for a recommendation and then back to the mayor and council for policy discussion, yes.
Well, that hasn't happened in a long time.
Well, I do think, John, just, just kind of an editorial footnote to this is that there seems to be a lot of focus on the, um, proposed drive-through, the component of the plan. Um, and I, I think, I, I still, still maintain that it, it's very clear we do our homework, and I'm asking staff for a little bit of this, this sort of fact-checking too, about criteria for approvals, what, what the truth is about drive, uh, drive-throughs and how they've been handled in the city, um, whatever, whatever that means. Because I think there's a lot of freewheeling, kind of like, we don't do drive, you know, whatever it might be. And maybe true, but I, I, I really want us to have solid facts in front of us on what, what the planning and zoning, what the, what the precedent is for us to look at and improve and understand the, the relevance of, of drive-throughs. And, you know, whatever it is, it is. I just want to make sure we have a solid foundation to make that, make those findings.
We also discussed in our previous, from the commission section, about redefining what drive-throughs are. In other words, segmenting drive-throughs, whether it be a bank as opposed to a food, as opposed to takeout, as opposed to fast food, there will be a whole segmentation of it.
Or pharmacy, whatever.
Or pharmacy, right. Because it's changing. It's evolving right now.
But for the purposes of this application, I just want to make sure we have solid, solid information in front of us in no uncertain terms, both, both for the benefit of the public who, who need to understand this and, and as well as us as we discuss it. Because I'm, I'm a little nervous that it's been somewhat arbitrary in the way we've discussed it. And so I don't, I don't want that if we're going to, if we're going to reopen the record and reconsider the application.
Facts, facts. Facts.
And alternative facts. Should they be available?
Okay, thanks, John. Anything else?
Uh, just one more thing. Um, I was invited as a, um, special guest to attend the Kettlins Downtown Working Group meeting last night. And, um, the purpose of that particular committee is a committee of the Kettlins Citizens Assembly. It's intended to, um, be an advocate for downtown Kettlins and communicate what's going on in downtown Kettlins. Um, so obviously I attended, I was invited and I attended, and I intend to make sure that they are kept aware of everything that's going on and that there's collaboration between the city and the KCA. And, and I'm also on the, on the One Main Street Committee, so, um, we're keeping tabs on everything that's going on there.
How is the communication coming out of there? What, what is the vehicle for that?
It seems to me so far, it's the Town Courier, the, the Town Crier and Next Door Kettlins. Um, there's a Next Door Kettlins, um, special site for the Kettlins Downtown Working Group. And so they post what's going on.
There's some restrictions on that, I think, on who can see those messages or who can join in.
They're working on that, I understand. I don't know the intricacies of that, but I know that, um, it was limited to Kettlins, but they were trying to make sure Lakelands is certainly was part of it, Wesley and the other, um, adjoining neighborhoods.
Okay, that's, that's great, John. Um, uh, does staff have any sort of connection to the Old Town, uh, community as well? Similar to...
That's more through economic development. Economic development, that's a real focus. You know, they, they, they staff the Old Town Advisory Committee and, um, everything that's going on there. Um, but, um, you know, we, we, we have a pretty specific connection to economic development as well. So, um, we try to keep tabs on that as well. The challenge with Old Town is I don't think there's a equivalent sort of citizens group in Old Town. I think it's much more...
It was. Um, and I don't know where it is now. I'm just curious. Staff doesn't know either.
There's a list, sir, but I think that's about it.
Yeah, there was, there was a good Old Town, um, business group as well as advisory committee, yeah. Actually, Greg, you going to talk about the Old Town Park and the ribbon cut? No?
No, I don't have it.
Oh, okay. All right, anything else, John? It's a victory. Nobody wants to talk about it?
What's that?
Do we do, we open the Old Town Park?
We just, we did just reopen, we did open the Old Town Park, um, last week, I believe?
Well, it's not like that.
Last Friday, I think it opened up a...
It's a photo, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I'd imagine there'll be a ribbon, ribbon cutting. I don't have a date, though.
Right.
Okay.
I haven't heard.
You still have to punch listed and commission it.
Just have to train them through. Put a ribbon across the track, let the ring, the train runs through the...
All right, we'll keep, keep posted. If there's an event that we should, uh, keep an eye out for. All right, anything else? Greg, anything tonight?